Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, September 19th, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting work sessions to receive updates on Project Hope and Inclusive Dubuque.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for September 19th, 2022. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our first work session topic is the Project Hope Quarterly Update. I will turn it over to Alex Baum from the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. Mayor Kavanaugh, council members, staff from the city, thank you all so much for inviting me here to speak today. My name is Alex Baum from the Community Foundation. I do want to apologize, my colleague Clara Lopez Ortiz was going to come and talk about Inclusive Dubuque, but she is currently at a conference on disaster preparedness, and so she asked me to step in and speak to her. So hopefully you can take an hour of me. But I am very excited to come here today and talk to you about Project Hope, which I've been very excited with the work that we have been doing together, and I'm hoping that we can share not only more about the program, but also give you a little taste of the things that we've been talking about together as a stakeholder group. So Project Hope is focused on economic opportunity. There's a number of areas that I want to talk about today: poverty in workforce, education, equity, learning and data. These are some of the key areas that Project Hope is focusing on for the City of Dubuque and really trying to emphasize. The key part of this and kind of the masthead is the Project Hope Steering Committee, which is composed of key stakeholders, nonprofit leaders, community members from around the city who come together to talk about economic opportunity. Some of the different topics that we've covered and discussed just in the past year have been around the cost of living, outreach to underserved communities, what social networks look like for low-income individuals who move to our community, and where is poverty located in Dubuque? How can we dig a little bit deeper into the data? One of the key areas that we focus on is that poverty and workforce element. So Project Hope helps sponsor the food provider network that we run out of the Community Foundation, and I know that several of you were present at the Food Security Summit that we helped host earlier this month. The VITA EITC tax programs help individuals, low-income individuals, by offering free tax preparation for them every year. We are engaged in a number of workforce partnerships, including Dubuque Works, the Success Mentor Program series, and of course Opportunity Dubuque, which was originally started out of Project Hope, and then the Partnership Empowerment Network, which helps brings together those frontline staff from nonprofit organizations to meet together and to talk. Education has also been a very big focus of us, both through the Every Child Reads Program, which is focusing on summer learning right now, really expanding our work, the Dubuque College Access Network, which Donna Lowen runs, focused on how do we get our high school students into that higher education and workforce training programs, and restorative strategies run by Jim Jalinski, which works on engaging youth who are running into problems at school with the law and helping divert them away from the juvenile court system into restorative agreements with the victims, with other members of the crime that were taking place, so that a good resolution can be taken place that doesn't need to involve having a young person get something on their criminal record. Up on the chart here, I've shown you kind of one of the compelling things that is really driving our work around Every Child Reads and Summer Learning, which is the reading proficiency levels currently as of the end of 2021. So in our school district, following the COVID pandemic, 4.3 out of 10 3rd graders were at reading proficiency, only 30% of Black students and 12% of Pacific Islanders were at reading proficiency. The COVID pandemic has had a pretty significant impact on our students that we're not necessarily fully aware of what the ramifications of these are going to be, and so part of our effort is really to focus on how can we come together as a community and fill those gaps so that we get these kids back to where they need to be to be successful academically and later in life when they enter the workforce. Equity is also a really big focus of ours. I'm currently in the process of wrapping up an immigration needs assessment, which we have been conducting with a number of different partners. Hopefully we'll have the report released in the next couple of months, but I'm very happy to talk about any portion of that assessment. We're also in the process of wrapping up some research on mapping internal relationships within immigrant communities. There's a picture up there from one of our Marshallese churches of Marshallese community members participating in some of that research. And Project Hope works very closely with Inclusive Dubuque on a number of different equity issues around the community, which I'll get into later when we talk about Inclusive Dubuque. Learning is also a big part of Project Hope. I don't know if everybody's aware, but the Mental Health Community Needs Assessment and the Child Care Needs Assessment that were conducted for the city several years ago, both came out of Project Hope, and this is something that we are continuing year after year. Just this summer, I finalized a needs assessment into community resource referral platforms within our community. What are some of the opportunities and what are some of the gaps around these new pieces of technology? And we're in the process of finalizing a new updated brain health needs assessment, which we're hoping to release in the next couple of weeks. We also, through Project Hope, run a partnership with the MIT Sloan Business School. For those of you who might not be aware, this is a great program where MIT sends us very bright grad students to work as part of a semester class here in Dubuque on an issue that we choose around equity and workforce. So it's a great way to be able to get some really brilliant young people to come in and perform a lot of research and work into some specific models and recommendations that we can adapt as a community. We've done this four times previously and are hoping to engage with them again this year. Dubuque's kind of one of the ideal places for them to go, and we always have a lot of students who are interested in coming here. And finally, we have a number of learning partnerships that we're taking part of. One example of which is that we've been working with the Loris School of Business Analytics and the Dubuque Community School District in order to see whether or not we can get those talented students at the Loris School of Business to work with the school district on running analysis of some of their programs. We started this program last year. I'm really thrilled with this partnership, and one of the areas that the focus has been on is trying to build out a model for predicting how students, which students are at risk of dropping out of school. Following the COVID pandemic, it becomes a lot more difficult to use some of those traditional metrics, so if we're able to tap into some really brilliant individuals using deep data analytics to look at what might be those high-risk factors and produce a model that principals can use, that's a huge win for the community, and it's a learning opportunity for those students at the same time. And then finally, the last piece and something that I like to start all of our Project Hope stakeholder meetings with is data. This is a big focus of ours, from the data walk to the equity profiles to some of the dashboards that we use. But instead of talking too much about this, I thought it might be interesting to show you some of the data that we've been putting together and some of the different discussions we have been having. So I'd like to go through three different kind of topics to briefly talk about. The first is the idea of the ALICE Survival Budget, which some of you may have seen before. So ALICE stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed, and it is a methodology that was developed by the United Way to basically find out what is a survival-level budget for a household in a specific community. As you can see, it looks at different budget items like housing, childcare, transportation, and tries to map out what really are the minimum levels for those within a community and what does somebody need to make in order to meet that budget. You'll notice savings is not located up here, right? These are really about survival and about being able to maintain a household, not being able to build for a thriving future. What we found when we put current data, updated data through the methodology was that for a single adult, they should really be earning about $12.27 an hour in order to meet that survival budget. For a single parent, it was about $20.75 an hour, or about $41,000.5 per year, and for a family of four, that should be about $74,000 per year. Now, that can be split between two different incomes, but it shows you some of the levels that we're working with. We also then decided to look at, well, how does this match up with the different households within our county to see who is meeting these thresholds and who isn't? So it's hard to get exact numbers, but some of the estimates that we came up with is that about 17.8% of households are not meeting the single adult threshold, 32% aren't meeting the single parent threshold, and another 58% aren't making the family of four threshold. So that has kind of led us to a lot of conversations about where are the big expenses that are driving these challenges? How are families making do if they're not meeting these different criterias? And where can we step in as a community to try to address these issues? The second thing I want to talk about is something of the other side: income, and specifically looking at it with race and ethnicity. We're all very interested in what is the kind of average and the median levels of income that we're seeing within our community, and how do we disaggregate that and break that out for different communities so that everybody, we make sure that everybody in our community is thriving? So here I've put together a table that shows by different race and ethnicities, both the median household income, which is often the term that we use, but also the per capita income. And there's a big reason why I do this. Now, I've highlighted a couple of cells here. You may often have seen that our Black community has a median household income of about $12,000 per year, which is astonishingly low, staggering. This is often something that really drives a lot of conversations and should be something that pushes not only Project Hope, but our whole community forward to making sure that everyone here can thrive. The other thing, though, that I want to highlight is often by looking at household income, we miss some of the elements of poverty within our community. The median household income for a Pacific Islander population is $34,000, which isn't terrific, but it's nowhere close to the $12,000 we see before. But that's often because Marshallese and other Pacific Islanders live in multi-generational housing around our community, and so you might have several different people earning incomes living in the same household, or very large families being supported by that one income. So if you break it down by per capita income, suddenly that Pacific Islander number jumps out to only $6,000 per capita, which is another shocking amount that I think really should be driving our policy conversations as we look for where do we need to address poverty and economic mobility within our community. And then finally, the third thing that I want to touch on is something that I hadn't really realized before, but has come out during these meetings around gender and income. Now, this is a chart showing the percentage of families who are below the poverty line by the lead householders. So you can see about 17.5% of households below the poverty line are married, about the same amount have a male householder with no spouse present, and the rest are female householders with no spouse present. So 2/3 of our families living below the poverty line are led by single mothers, and the vast majority of those households have children. So it is really single mothers who are living within these populations. I tried as best as I could to lay out what are the different percentages of people below the poverty line, so you can see those in college, those under the age of 18, 65 and older. This isn't precise data because it isn't necessarily broken down precise, but this was the best I was able to look at. And you can see there's that slice of female head of family down at the bottom. But if you look at the number of children that female head of households have within their family and some of the other factors coming in, the best estimate I was able to come up with was that over 30% of our entire population living below the poverty line is in those female head-of-household families, single mother families. So it's a significant percentage of our population living below the poverty line is directly connected to those single mothers. So that covers kind of the data that I wanted to present to you. I would love to open it up for a discussion or to try to answer any questions that anybody might have, and if there is other data that these charts make you think of or other questions that you might have, please let me know, because part of what we're trying to do with Project Hope is always explore the data a little bit farther and push in a little bit deeper to see how we can go. I also wanted to check quickly, would you like me to present now on Inclusive Dubuque and save all questions for later, or would it be better to do Project Hope first?
I think we've got the time to at least do some questions here for Project Hope while it's fresh on our minds. Oh, go ahead, Kenna.
I was also just going to say, since the agenda shows the public that the next one doesn't start until 6, we should do questions on this one first.
Perfect. That's why we got Kenna along for the ride. Thanks, Kenna. All right. Questions? Discussion? Yes. Laura. Ms. Russell, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you help me understand how this work is connected to our Office of Shared Prosperity and how that data is shared and how that works?
Absolutely. Connected isn't even the right word. It's, in my opinion, a full-blown partnership at this extent. Anderson and I meet regularly to talk about what we're going to present on at the next meeting, to try to find out what his priorities and Brumwell's priorities are for the work that they're doing and how we can direct the work of Project Hope to really coincide with that work. Part of every stakeholder meeting that we have is dedicated to a presentation from the Office of Shared Prosperity and Neighborhood Support, if they're available to give it and if they have updates to give. And it's really, it is our belief that the work of Project Hope and the Office of Shared Prosperity should be very closely intertwined and working towards the same objectives, because otherwise we have two groups focused on economic mobility that are heading maybe in roughly similar directions but not lockstep, and that's inefficient and really a disservice for our community. So it's very, very closely tied together, our work.
Wonderful. Thank you. Ms. Mayor?
Yeah, Ms. Farber.
So Alex, thank you very much for the presentation, and I very much like and support everything you're doing for the economic mobility there. The one slide on equity that addresses immigration needs and the mapping, is this based on current immigration community here in Dubuque, or are you expanding out for refugees and other potential immigrants that may come into Dubuque?
That's a great question. So the Community Foundation's focus is on those immigrant and migrant populations that are currently in our community, right? How do we best serve our Marshallese, our Latino-Latino-Latinx population, our Pacific, our Guatemalan Mayan, our the new Afghan refugees who have come into our community, you know, our Mandarin-speaking population? All of these different groups, college students, whatever it might be, we're really looking at how we can best serve them with the belief that really, you know, when we are serving the communities that we have in our community the best, that is how we are able to grow those communities and make sure that they thrive. I think that's what we've seen within our Marshallese population, for example, is that the success Dubuque has had in engaging that community and providing services for that community has made us one of the largest populations within the United States. Our goal is, number one, we're going to beat Arkansas, but most of our focus is not on kind of national or international issues of increasing migration. It's really how do we best serve the populations that we have here today?
Right. So basically what you're saying is the good news spreads, and then more people would potentially come into Dubuque based on families and friendships that they have here?
From what I've seen in my research, that is one of the leading ways in which people move to different, decide what community to live in and settle down in, and word does spread very quickly in different areas.
So is there any way to track the numbers that may be coming in that are new based upon all the goodness and all the goodwill here in Dubuque that would promote additional friends and family and others in these groups to come into Dubuque?
It's a good question. To be honest, a lot of the data on our immigrant populations is very challenging to come by. Even some of the publicly available data we have, I believe, pretty significantly misses the reality for the populations. This has been a struggle for Dubuque. If you talk with people at Crescent, they will apply for a grant, and the grantmaker will come back and say, well, you only have 300 Pacific Islanders in your community. What do you need this grant for? And they'll say, no, we have a roll of 600 Pacific Islanders that are just our clients. The census number is wrong, but people tend to believe those designated data sets, even if they have a really challenging time being able to capture migrant and immigrant groups. So it's hard to get exact numbers, but what I say is even with this imperfect data, our Pacific Islander population is by far the fastest-growing population in Dubuque over the past 10 years. So I think that really speaks to the amount of growth that we've seen, even without, even with imperfect data that generally underestimates that level of growth, it's still been very significant.
Well, it's nice to see, and thank you for the research.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor? Ms. Wethel, and then Mr. Resnick.
Okay.
I saw hand first.
No, that's okay. Thank you. This is great, as all your data is that, the data walk in your office was really impressive to me when I had the opportunity to see that, and it helps me to see things in numbers and visually, so I appreciate this. And when we were given your slideshow in advance to look through this, the 30% of households living below the poverty line being single mothers as head of household, I thought that, obviously, that's a stunning and tragic number, but I think it also helps us to hone in on exactly who we need to provide services for, and it makes me think about childcare. And so we've been fortunate to receive through the childcare business incentives, through the governor, money that is going to help us build that in the community, but I don't want us to forget how we need to serve these women and their children, because this is where generational poverty will break. That number should frighten us, and I think as it relates to daycare, we need to remember that. I want everyone to have access to daycare, but those women need access to daycare like no one else. If we truly want to be dedicated to poverty, that's where we start, that's where we target, in addition to business partners and employers and the great momentum we have. So I just wanted to call attention to that because it was so remarkable to me, but I think it helps me to hone in on where we should have our priority with daycare. So, thank you.
Absolutely. And if I can respond, I completely agree with both of your points. You know, this is a shocking number up here about the percentage of our families living below the poverty line who are with single mothers, but that's also an opportunity and agree. If we're able to engage with a third of that population, that's 10% of the individuals in poverty in our community are directly tied to those single mothers that we've engaged with. And what a great way to be able to impact people, because you're also then impacting those children who make up a significant percent of people living below the poverty line in our community are those under the age of 18. Related to childcare, I also completely agree with you. Some of the data that we've been pulling and looking at is regard to the affordability of childcare within our community. The Childcare Aware America says that in order for childcare to be affordable, it should make up no more than 7% of a family's income level, and we can talk about whether or not that's correct or not, but if you go by that rate and the 2020 weekly cost of childcare, to put one child through childcare for a year at that rate, 60, I think 65% of households within Dubuque County do not meet that threshold for it to be considered affordable, right? The vast majority of the families in our community do not make enough for that affordable qualification for childcare. It's really one of the leading factors that drives that ALICE data that we looked up upwards, because being able to, you know, confidently put kids in childcare is a limiting factor. So I completely agree with you.
Mr. Resnick?
Thank you, and thanks for your presentation. Some great questions and answers here. I guess, a couple of questions. You know, poverty, as you know, is a complex topic that keeps changing, and you have these, this data here, and there's a difference between correlation and causation, right? So, I mean, we have, I mean, are the Pacific Islanders doing, the level they're doing because they're Pacific Islanders, you know, controlled for all the other things? I remember an educator told me that some students were having issues because of lack of engagement, which you mentioned that the Pacific Islanders aren't really engaging, which is great, and then academic stability, they keep moving, you know? That is just a tough issue to do if you're, you know, the Community Foundation, if people aren't here very long to take advantage of some of the programs. So I guess you talk about data sets and the fastest-growing percentage, is that, I mean, fastest-growing numbers is the Pacific Islanders, is that as a percentage or actual numbers?
As a percentage. I feel, I believe that within the City of Dubuque, and I may be wrong on this, but I believe our Black population is the fastest-growing in terms of pure numbers over the past 10 years, while our Pacific Islander is the fastest-growing percentage-wise, but I'm not 100% sure on that and would be happy to check it.
And, you know, again, data is very interesting. I was looking at your ALICE here and the annual 73,800 that you need for two adults, two children. Well, we had two adults and four children, and we never got close to that, and a lot of people here in Dubuque don't get close to that, you know, however you want to break them down into categories. And so it's interesting, because you mentioned, how are people handling that? And have you come up with some preliminary answers? I could tell you how we did it, but what, you know, what are you hearing?
I think it's an excellent question and one that I don't have perfect answers for. I think that, for example, if you take childcare as one of the examples, a lot of people in our community rely on families, neighbors, others for covering some of that childcare. Relationships make up a big part of how families are able to get by within our community when they're struggling in those areas. I think also that the ALICE data isn't a perfect and exact replication. It's something that I believe in a lot, but it is certainly not the case that if a family of four is making under $73,000 that they are, you know, not surviving. But I think it is a good systemic view into what our systems and the markets that we have going kind of dictate for families. One of the interesting things, if you talk about relationships as one of those ways of being able to allow people to kind of thrive and move ahead, I know that I rely on my wonderful in-laws for a ton ever since I've moved from Dubuque. But a lot of those lower-income populations, the evidence shows, have much smaller social networks, they are more likely to be mobile, they're more likely to have fewer reliable connections that they can put into place, and so a lot of those building blocks that I think many people in Dubuque use to get through, especially those who have deep, deep roots in those communities, are a much bigger challenge for new challenge for newcomers, especially ones that don't already have a set community. That's one of the areas that we've kind of talked about a little bit more and that I'm interested in exploring. When we had that conversation, we had Josh Jasper from Resources Unite come in to talk to us a little bit, and he talked about the idea of the matriarch in the communities, often what they see, which I think speaks to a little bit of that. Somebody has moved into the community, found a home, set up a system, and now other people are starting to come in with a connection to them. Those individuals don't have a large network, but they do have that connector, that person, a cousin, an aunt, somebody else who has drawn them there. How do we leverage that individual in order to provide those services, in order to provide that stability to all of those other families within their network?
Thank you for what you do for our citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we are at 6:00. I have one quick question, though, before we move on to the next work session. The gaps in the data that you're showing, so an example would be the one you highlighted. It was an asterisk, 2020 data is not available there. Can you talk just a little bit more about that? I mean, you mentioned some of the things, you already mentioned that some of the census data that you had talked about in terms of Pacific Islanders is inaccurate based on your own counts and the counts of other community organizations here. What are you finding? What challenges are you seeing because of gaps in data, specifically maybe census data, since we've heard a lot about the 2020 census being problematic?
Yeah, I think one of the major challenges is for a community our size, it's often hard to find exact numbers, especially when you break it down and try to disaggregate the data. Looking outside the city, especially in rural areas, this is also a big problem. One of the things that weighs on my mind a little bit, and I don't have a perfect solution to, is that specifically the 2020 census data, American Community Survey data that came out, which is the most recent up-to-date data that we have. There is some new 2021 data came out, that's one-year data. I'm happy to go into that more. But the 2020 data, the Census Bureau has come out and said, because of the COVID pandemic, we're afraid that we've missed a number of low-income families, that this data is skewed more than usual from us being able to capture that. And so really, when we look at some of the 2020 data, we should be concerned, is this actually representative? Or are there more low-income families that we haven't captured because that barrier imposed by the pandemic? I'm not exactly sure how to move forward with that. I don't think we should discard that data, but we should always look at it with a healthy eye, because, you know, you're absolutely right. The data, especially when it's coming from these large national sources, it's difficult for it to be completely exact, but it is often the best that we have.
Got you. Well, thank you very much for that note. All right, well, with that, then, we will end this work session and move on to the next one.